Councilmember Connors.
Here.
Councilmember McCary.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Mayor Patra M. Horn.
Here.
And Mayor Hatch.
Here. We'll ask Councilmember Horn to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would, Sherry.
You can all place your hands on your heart or salute if you're military. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of California, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item, excuse me, item number four, presentations of ceremonial and ceremonial matters. We have shown three presentations. One is not able to attend because of illness, but we do have a presentation regarding driver's safety. It'll be presented by Captain Cruz Alday, the Chief of Police Services, Orange County Sheriff's Department. Captain?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to come in front of you and speak and give you just a quick glance on traffic and traffic collisions for our city. This was brought to my attention by Councilmember Cynthia Connors, and I appreciate that opportunity. So with that said, the city of Laguna Woods is unique to our contract cities. City, and one of the reasons is because 90% of the property is first traffic and traffic laws within private property. So it's a unique partnership that we have currently with Laguna Woods Security and their security division. They themselves, under their own bylaws with the housing mutual corps, have their bylaws which allows them to enforce traffic within private property, but we ourselves do not. We will respond to traffic collisions and any criminal activity. We will respond to those, and depending whether there is injury to any of the drivers, we will take a report. If it's just private, our property that was damaged, then we will just facilitate the exchange of information. So with that said, I will go to the first slide. And this is just a quick glance of 2022 and what took place in 2022 as far as collisions. Like I mentioned, non-injury collisions is property damage. None of the individuals complained of pain or was transported to the hospital or had any type of injury, so it was just property damage. And a lot of times, we'll just facilitate exchange of information. Injury collision, that's going to be, like I mentioned, being transported to the hospital or a lot of times just complaint of pain. It'll require a police report from us, and we'll facilitate that. And you see there that we had in 2022, we did have a fatality. And as far as, I'm sure you're curious as to how many of these were behind private property, and 22 of these were in private property.
Oh, my gosh.
So if we go to the next slide, quick glance for 2023. And pretty much very similar, 22 non-injury collisions, 39 injury collisions. Again, one fatality, and 17 of these happened behind the gates, private property. If we go on to the next one, this was something that both myself and Chris wanted to address. So collectively, we spoke, and I was able to use part of funds, the funds that I currently have within the budget, to be able to increase my enforcement. And a lot of it is motor enforcement. Using a motor deputy allows them to be able to do better enforcement and enforcement that typically a black and white patrol or a vehicle wouldn't be able to do. So in 2022, this is how many sites were given by our deputies, 265 citations. And the main focus was on speed, the hands-free device, traffic violations. And we know that the biggest thoroughfares that we have is Molton and El Toro. And a lot of times, they use these to commute. It's not necessarily our own residents that are doing these violations. A lot of times, it's people going through. But we still have to make sure that they abide by the traffic laws. And so that's why we took advantage of the opportunity to do a little bit more enforcement. So that's what we did in 2022. If we go to the next one, pretty consistent. We did the same thing. 2023, we issued over 257 citations. And again, our motors were out there doing some enforcement. One of the things that we were also able to do, if you go to the next slide, was as a department, every year, we get a grant through the California Office of Traffic Safety, and it's a selective traffic enforcement grant. Because our numbers are low compared to the rest of our contract cities, most years, we wouldn't qualify for any of these funds. Because of the enforcement that we did and the number of TCs that we did have the previous years, this year, fiscal year 2324, we were able to receive $4,000. So it allows me to use those $4,000 for additional enforcement. What are we using that enforcement? Again, basic traffic enforcement, distracted driving, and motorcycle and pedestrian safety. We've already done two of those events. We anticipate doing a couple more. And that's an extra on top of what we're already doing, our current efforts. If we go on to the next one, this is a unique opportunity. So we've had your constituents, one in particular that has said that he's had issues with street racing. And so Chris, obviously, in partnership with us, was able to get those ordinance written, and you guys passed them. But an additional thing that I'm doing is this class that is put on by CHP and partnership agencies educates our deputies to be able to see the violations, the modified exhaust, the extra equipment that they put on these vehicles, that it's against the law. And it educates them, and it allows them to enforce. So I'll be sending, next month, I'll be sending a couple of the deputies to this class to, again, be proactive, so if and when they see it, we could engage and we could entertain these individuals coming through the city. So, next one. That'll do it. It's a short and sweet, but again, it gives us an opportunity to be able to take a look at what efforts we are doing and what has taken place the last couple of years. So I'd be happy to entertain your questions.
Let's start with Carol, and we'll go around for questions here or coming.
We had, thank you. We had two major collisions with our fence. Did you, you were probably aware of those two. They actually damaged, big damage on Molton. Do you know which one, the two I'm speaking of?
I may, if.
Anyone else? Remember, the fence was, they just repaired one of them. It was major destruction of our fence, so they must have, I would say, probably in most of these, speed must have been a big one, I would think.
Sure, sure.
Now, on my way here, it was a bicyclist cutting across to, through the, through the cars, between the cars, talking on the phone. You were talking about handheld devices, a bicyclist on his way up. It's a wonder, I hope he made it because he was really not operating very safely. I'd say that speed, once again, I think I've spoken to, and I encourage the ordinance, this, this speed issue is really a big one, isn't it? Would you, would you address that one again, and the kinds of speed that you're seeing?
Well, like we mentioned, these are big thoroughfares that we have, Molton and El Toro. And it opens it up for that speed violation. You know, a lot of people are coming through, not necessarily residents, but they're not excluded from doing that. But being as big as they are, we tend to lose sight of our speed. And that's, sometimes they need that reminder from our motors or our deputies to slow it down because it's not a freeway, and that's the biggest thing that we see, and that's the biggest focus that we try to, to do.
Things that happens, and crystals, it happens. I think it set off when, it changes the pattern when the ambulance or something go through because actually, our signal's off again right over here. I don't know if anyone's noticed, but if you're getting ready to make a left turn, you often can't make it through the intersection before it turns to Orange Soul. And that happens a lot, but you want to talk about that for a second?
Yeah, it's vehicle preemption. So when, when a fire engine is going through an intersection, there's equipment on those engines that will trigger the intersection to shut down in the opposite direction that they're traveling to allow them to move through more quickly. But then after that, to get the intersection back on a regular cycle, it'll take a little bit of time for it to reset itself. And what you see when that's happening are some shorter yellow signals, some abbreviated green lights until the system resets itself. Yeah.
Thank you.
Cynthia.
Have you had? Have you had experience with e-bikes and issues? Because a lot of our residents now, especially in our hilly areas, are zipping around on e-bikes. And I wonder if, if the sheriff actually enforces any of that or responds to any of those accidents.
You know, our neighboring cities are experienced, experiencing a lot of issues and problems with them, more so than us. It's, most of the time, the violators or the e-bike riders are young, high school age kids. And what we've taken collectively as a department is to try to educate. Educate not only the rider, but the parents. Because there's different levels of classification for the e-bikes. And there's several, one in particular that is classified as a motorcycle and not necessarily an e-bike. And a lot of times, the, the parents do not know this. And so we take that opportunity to educate not only the parents, but the students, either at the high school level, high school itself, or anywhere we encounter them, just to make sure, one, that they're riding safely and they follow the rules of the road because they have to abide by the rules of the roads. Two, that they're wearing their helmet. And again, three, if the bike is not supposed to be on the road because it's classified as an off-highway vehicle or a motorcycle, that we educate them on that as well. So we, we're taking it as an education period at this time.
Well, for our residents in the village who have found these bikes as a pretty easy way to get around, it's just complicated because if you put the bikes in the street, they're really way too fragile to be in with the zipping cars. And most of our sidewalks are multimodal trails. And so, and so putting the bikes on the sidewalk is a better idea, but they're so much heavier and faster than the pedestrians that we need to encourage our residents who are riding e-bikes to be slow and cautious and to give the pedestrians the berth that they need.
Absolutely.
I originally asked you to come here today because there was, a few weeks ago, a pretty nasty accident involving a car driven by a non-resident, as far as I know, that kind of ran over the front end, ran up the front end of a golf cart and caused some serious injury. And I wonder if you can address the circumstances of that accident and any lessons that our residents might learn in terms of safe driving for autos and defensive driving for golf carts.
What I can't tell you on that particular case is we did respond because obviously, there was injuries. And we did take a report, and we are investigating it, went to our traffic office. What I mentioned that is unique is that we don't enforce any traffic laws per se within the gates. So I can't tell you whether it was speed that cost it. It was a moving violation. And obviously, we encourage them to follow the rules of the road, but that is a unique situation that happened behind the gates. We're investigating it, and again, I, I don't want to make any assumptions to say one, one vehicle was responsible and the golf cart was not responsible. Both of them have a responsibility being, sharing the road and have a responsibility of following the rules of the road. Again, it's an open investigation. Our deputies did take a report. And what I'm, what I can say is that the driver of the golf cart is doing well. You know, suffered some injuries, but is doing well. And again, it's just being investigated by our deputies right now.
Okay, thank you.
Well, she was 92, wasn't she?
If I remember correctly, it was 91, yes, yes.
91, the driver of the golf cart.
So we have to be very cautious and careful inside the village as well. And is it not true that you come in often when the fire authority receives a 911 call and they come in an ambulance? I've seen sheriff's cars there as well.
Yeah, depending on the situation and the call for service, they may request, they may request for us to also respond. A lot of times, because we may be able to get there before they do, just based on the fact that we have a vehicle and they have their engine. And it'll allow us to start assessing the situation before they get there. And then, once they get there, we'll turn over the situation to them. So we do share that partnership, and it just depends on, on the call, the call for service. A lot of times, when it makes it to our dispatch center, they'll be able to assess that, and they'll send us as well as them. Same, same thing with them. So we, we do share that partnership.
Thank you. Sherry.
Just thank you for keeping our community safe, or I don't have anything to add.
Angie, anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for the partnership that you share with the Laguna Woods Village Security Department. And oftentimes, people will approach me really frustrated with our security because they don't understand the relationship between the security officers and the actual law enforcement officers. So can you speak to that just briefly?
Like we mentioned, for anything having to do with any type of criminal violation, we like for you guys to call us because that's what we're here for. That's what we're contracted for. That's our primary responsibilities. So we would like for you to call us. A lot of times, residents will choose to call Laguna Woods Security first. So we're losing some valuable time depending on what it is. If it's a property crime, then sure, we could wait on that. But if it's something that actively just happened and someone's been victimized, we recommend you call us directly, immediately, so we can start sending our resources. And again, whether you choose to call security, you understand that security is going to eventually call us because we're the law enforcement agency. They'll attend to all of your traffic needs within the village as long as it doesn't constitute any type of crime, whether it's DUI or injury, traffic collision. Because they do have their own, you know, traffic bylaws that they have. But as far as any type of crime, we always recommend that you call us and call us directly and call us first. And we'll assess, and that way, we can start triaging the situation and sending our, our deputies to the call.
Thank you.
Cynthia.
Yeah, just one more thing. I just want to point out to our residents that the village has its own Security and Community Access Committee, which provides a forum for village residents to discuss traffic safety issues with the board members and with our security chief, Eric Nunez. And you can find out about those meetings on the village website, so check it out. Thank you.
If I could add to that, Eric Nunez is a former law enforcement officer. He was a former chief for Los Alamitos PD. So the partnership has been great because of that. One, and, and so has Carlos Rojas. He was a former chief for Santa. Both of them understand law enforcement, and it's a unique partnership because now he's dealing with the private community and its bylaws and the board. But yet, he educates us as, at the same time, because we don't understand that situation. We understand the law. We understand our job. But it's a unique partnership, and that allows it for it to work seamlessly because he understands it, and we have a great working relationship between both.
Good. Thank you.
Captain, one final question. When you were reported to us a month ago about the speeding and the noise on the streets, you mentioned, that really shocked me, that those occurrences were going as 1:00 AM in the morning, places like, times like that. Is, could you comment on that?
What I could tell you is that I didn't mention that. The individual was mentioning that, that he heard it and he felt it was happening during those times. My recommendation to him and anybody else has always been, call us. Call us, so that way, we could come, investigate, make contact, assess the situation. But as far as me and having calls for services, that I could actually look back and see, did a resident call us at 1:00 and actually give us that call for services? I don't have none of that.
You don't have that?
I don't have any record of that, and that's why I encourage him and everybody else to call us. When in doubt, we'll come out, we'll look into it. And if nothing else, now we have a, a pattern, and if, nothing else, and now I know how to deploy my, my assets.
Okay, thank you. Carol?
I think the, what you're referring to, other people may not realize, where people actually live in United and they are on El Toro, and they heard, really, he showed us photos of the problem, and it was really rather severe. So, but the problem, if you heard that noise and it's on El Toro, then you want to call the sheriff's department, not, not security because security can't patrol. And I think that causes a little bit of confusion, that they may not. And sometimes, I, I know that this happens with all of us. You see something, you don't necessarily take care of it right away by calling. And he was not the only person that complained. I had received complaints from people about that issue of the street racing, and it was often on El Toro, although I think some did take place perhaps on Molton. But anyway, that's a confusion of who you call. And you really should call if you know it's on those major streets, so that that gets documented. Thank you.
Well, we, we want to say, did you have a comment?
Nope. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
We want to thank you very much, and we'll receive and file that report. Did anyone in the audience have a question that would like to ask about this report?
Yeah, yeah, I ride a bike, and I always stop at street signs and traffic signals, unlike a lot of the bicyclists. But my complaint is, is about cars that have tinted windows. Because if I'm coming up to a driveway or something, and they're waving, I, maybe they're waving me on or something, I, I can't see them at all. And I wish there would be more enforcement of violations of tinted windows. Thank you.
Thank you.
Juanita Skilman, I happen to chair the Security, Community Access Committee. And our big confusion right now, or what we're working on, is non-registered vehicles. What is a motor vehicle? Electric bikes are a big thing. They have a motor. Are they a motor vehicle or not? And so we, we are saying they are. And we are putting our rules that have to do with motor vehicles to them as well.
Inside, inside the village.
Inside the village. The other thing is, inside the village, a golf cart does not have to be registered or have any kind of license. And the driver doesn't have to have a driver's license inside the village. And that's something that has led to two or three accidents that we have had just since the first of the year. One of them to my car. And so we're also looking at that. So we feel on the committee and the security department that all vehicles, from bicycles, electric bikes, motorcycles, golf carts, golf cars that are street legal, all need to be registered. And that's what we're working on right now.
Thank you, Juanita. Okay. Yes. You look like a biker, but you're not, right?
Definitely not a biker. I, I'm intelligent. Thank you, thank you. It was a joke. The truth is funny, right? But I did have a question about the police report. Why is the report from 2022, do you get a year off?
No, he was showing dates.
He showed 2023.
Right, but what about 2023?
He showed it.
He did.
Yes.
He gave all the statistics.
Yep.
And there was only like 100? That's it? On this crazy road, there was only like 100?
Well, remember, we have a short area.
But there were also inside things too, right? Inside that they didn't really report because they can't go in there?
I don't think any, were any fatalities inside? I don't know. No, they weren't.
They can go inside the village, but they don't enforce traffic laws on private property. So they don't give any citations in the HOA.
All right, that's good. Because I, I did see a lady, and it was really horrific. When Tesla, that guy, Elon Musk, you know, he did his little thing. And this, this poor woman, this beautiful woman who I always see out there walking on those really, really hard sidewalks, really horrible for the knees and the ankles. I guess she got really excited, and she fell face-first onto the cement. And I was there for it, and I saw her gush, gushing blood out of her skull. And her husband or caretaker, you know, was just like standing there, you know. And I just wonder, when are you going to start caring for your citizens on those sidewalks?
I don't think we've.
When are you going to start caring for their knees and their ankles and their skulls?
I don't think we've developed technology for soft sidewalks.
Right, is it going to take another 100 years?
Probably.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we have a presentation regarding Southern California Edison's Income Graduated Fixed Charge Proposal. And Kelly Lee will be making that presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. It's great to be here. I also, before I begin my presentation, wanted to make you aware of Friday morning, the South Orange County Economic Coalition is hosting Assemblywoman Diane Dixon down at Cox at 8:00 AM for a coffee conversation. If you'd like more information on that, I could send it over to Chris. To make you aware, I believe Councilmember Carol Moore has attended some of our events in the past. Previously, last month, we had Senator Wen. This is a great way to engage with your local legislators. And I know Assemblywoman Dixon represents the city as well. So it'd be great to, to have you, and I'll send that information on. But what I'm here to talk about today is fixed charge. Next slide. Next slide. The fixed charge is closely tied to the state's goals to reduce carbon emissions and to assist low-income households who pay a disproportionate share of their income on energy. Roughly 1.2 million of our customers are in the low-income category. And those are customers who are on our CARE and FARA programs, which at the state and federal level provide a discount for your electric service. In the city of Laguna Woods, there's about a 25% population that are in this low-income category. So as we transition to this clean energy transition, there will be more electrification of our homes, our vehicles, as you were talking about even e-bikes. I know that this is an all-electric community, so you do not have, you know, the natural gas component to your energy charges. But overall, what this transition is intended to do is to encourage electrification. So when we think about.
I just want to interrupt. What's the, what's the income number? The dollar number for residents to qualify for low-income programs?
You can find more information on that on our website, or you can apply by calling. And I have the number here, 1-800-798-5723. So the CARE program provides up to a 30% discount on your electricity per month. And the FARA, or the Family Electric Rate Assistance, provides about 18% discount per month.
And you say 25% of the residents of Laguna Woods have this problem?
Are on this program.
We, no, we have the lowest income of any city in the entire county. So just to make sure that the people in our, that doesn't mean everyone falls into that group. But Laguna Woods has the lowest income of the entire county. Just to make sure we understand, because we have a lot of vulnerable people. And these programs and so forth are very important. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. And perhaps there's under-representation, so we should encourage the residents to apply. And that is available, either there's a large print application, a small print application, or like I said, you could call that 1-800 number.
So you answered part of my question. The other part of it was, do you have a number of people that have signed up for these particular programs that qualify as low-income? Because that's what you're saying. You're saying.
25%, but we also have additional energy assistance programs. For instance, I believe you can be eligible for up to $200 in terms of our energy assistance program. And that's also on our website. I can share a community resource guide with Chris that lists some of those other opportunities. And a lot of those opportunities are, again, income-based. And that's in addition to our CARE and FARA program. And those are donations made from Edison employees and the public.
Out of fairness to you, I think, write your questions down and we will allow her to complete the presentation. And then you'll be here for, and I think most of the people here are for, to hear this presentation. So go ahead.
Perfectly. So as we, you know, increase our use of electrification, I would encourage you to look at your energy consumption holistically, whether it's your car, your home, and other things. So as electrification goes up, overall, it is anticipated that your comprehensive energy bill will go down by about a third, but this will take time. So speaking specifically on AB 205, this was passed by the legislature and approved by the governor in 2022. And essentially what it says is it creates a fixed charge. Well, it doesn't create a fixed charge. There's currently a fixed charge on your bill now, but it's about a dollar. But what it encourages us to do, or utilities to do rather, is to create a clear fixed charge with a certain fixed cost. That's customer service, that's the income qualified programs, that's our energy assistance programs, and that's the cost to maintain, operate, build, and construct the grid. The variable charge is the kilowatt hours that you use on a monthly basis. And that will fluctuate. So the intent of the fixed charge was to lower the bills on average for low-income customers. And this will range from 5% to 18%. And three income levels are required. There are other utilities that have supported use of this, as well as Southern California Edison. And our support of the fixed charge has not been with the income qualified or the income-based component of it. Utilities do not want your personally identifiable information. We're not in the business of accessing that information, and we don't want to be held responsible for it. So our recommendation would be for a third party to verify that data. That becomes a future issue. So back in 2020, we discussed time of use. And during that discussion, we discussed the bifurcation or how utilities make money. There is a misperception that Edison will make more money based on a fixed charge, where your electricity is charged and it's a pass-through cost for us. You are charged with no markup. So essentially, we make money off of a rate of return on the investment in the infrastructure only. Next slide. So what do you need to know about this? I talked about what the fixed charge is, consists of. And another part is the cost of electricity or the variable rate that we talked about, where that's what you use, where Edison buys fuel to generate energy, and we also buy power from other companies as well. Again, with no markup. So fixed charge will apply only to residential customers, not business customers at all. And this will be reflected on your bill. So when we talk about income levels, the income levels mean CARE and FARA customers and non-CARE and FARA customers. And we'll show a little bit more about that on the next slide. So this is essentially a restructuring of your bill, not an added fee or what some have called a tax to your bill. We talked about how it benefits low-income customers, but the biggest benefit will be seen by not only low-income, but low-income and high-use customers. And that is in other counties such as Riverside, Santa Bernardino, Los Angeles, you know, essentially like Palm Springs area, where there's CARE and FARA customers that also experience high heat events. But in our joint investor-owned utility proposal, we also included that CARE and FARA customers would not only receive the lowest fixed rate, fixed charge, but also retain that discount of 30% or 18% for CARE and FARA. So that would be in addition to their existing discount. So again, it would be imperative for individuals who are eligible for those programs to apply. Again, the intent is to incentivize electrification. The cost of the variable rate or the kilowatt hour will be reduced by approximately 30%. And this will encourage customers to adopt these new technologies. Next slide. This shows the three income levels. We had an initial proposal in April, and when the California Public Utilities Commission came back to utilities and said, give us a simplified version, or this should be the first version of the fixed charge that could be implemented quickly, will not require income collection, and will allow a smooth transition for a potential future version. So again, CARE and FARA customers are already required to provide their income data. Next slide. This slide reflects a number of organizations and regarding the key proposals and reflects the split amongst the different organizations who support higher fixed charge to drive down those volumetric rates or those kilowatt-hour charges by about 10 cents. And the organizations that want to delay implementation of the fixed charge. I know there's, it's sort of like alphabet soup when you look up there, but I want to break down. Edison is a utility. It's known as an investor-owned utility, just like SDGNE and PGNE. There's the CALPA, which is the California Public Advocates, which is an independent consumer advocate group, much like TURN, which is the Utility Reform Network. Then the NRDC is the National Resources Defense Council, the first national environmental advocacy group. And SIA is the National Trade Association for the U.S. Solar Industry. So that kind of reflects the average fixed charge level that's recommended amongst those groups and the percent reduction in volumetric rates, which will support electrification. Next slide. So since April, when we filed our first proposal based on the legislation that was passed, we've amassed some supporters in terms of community-based organizations and elected officials. Most noteworthy in terms of elected officials in Orange County is the mayor pro tem of Fountain Valley. On your city website, I did notice that there is posted comprehensive information about how residents can get involved in the process and provide comments before the CPUC. There is no public participation hearings yet scheduled, but you could go to a future meeting and discuss this, should you be inclined. Next slide. Here are a couple of high-level bullets from some of those consumer advocate organizations in terms of their opinions on the fixed charge and the benefit that they think that it will provide. A fixed charge is also not anything new, but something also involved in some of your other utility bills, such as cable, cell phone, and water. Next slide. Is reflective of myth versus fact. The first one talks about a fixed charge being an extra fee. I would like to highlight that that is not the case. It is just a restructuring of your existing bill. Another myth is that it is a new utility tax. Again, it's already included in your bill now, just at a lower rate. And so it's taking out some of those fixed charges to make it more clear and transparent of what you're being charged for. Again, the myth that all customers' income information will be required, and it will only be required for customers who are in our CARE and FARA programs, where they are required to share that information with us today. Again, the last myth that it will, you know, affect, you know, a lot of our families, and many families will benefit in terms of the cost of their energy. And all customers will benefit from the reduced cost of the volumetric rates. Next slide. Here are some resources that you can find additional information. I believe many of these are also on your website currently as well. And now I'm available for any questions, should you have them. Next slide.
All right. Let's see how we're going to play this, if we can. May I see by a show of hands the three individuals that, or see by a show of hands of how many feel they would like to ask a question or has a comment? Can I see by a show of hands? I would like, could you pass out a card to all those individuals so I have them here?
Just to be clear, filling out a card is voluntary. We can certainly pass out the cards, but you can also just approach the podium when called.
Maybe because you never have to.
No, no.
Provide your name or your address, even a G R L.
No, no one has. Yeah, you don't have to sign a card in order to speak. That's fine. It makes it easier for me up here if we have that. If you don't want to do it, then we can line up, okay? Since I have cards, we'll hear, now, these are comments on this particular presentation as opposed to any general comments you have on a non-agenda item. Okay. Tom, are you here? Oh, yes. Now let me make something very clear. You have three minutes. You are being timed. There'll be a sound. I appeared before the PUC, the California Public Utilities Commission, a week ago on this issue. I will read you what I said to them. But at this point in time, a light went on, a bell sounded when you reached three minutes. There was one minute. So we expect you to honor that three minutes, Tom, okay?
Is there a timer in front of me?
Yes.
Right there. Okay, and she'll let you know. Okay. Now we're talking about, we're talking about the Edison presentation right now.
Oh, I don't want to talk about the Edison presentation.
Good, go. You're on.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I think you need some of that water.
I, my voice, it comes and goes. Go ahead.
In my universe, time is an illusion. Yes. Just to let you all know, I am a dog trainer. My name is Thomas Fleming. And part of dog training is to see body language, to be an expert at body language. And seeing you all, especially the police and the gentlemen and ladies behind me, is you are all stuck in fear. You all fear something and you're sad about something. Why do I know that? It's because body language is very easy to me. I see it on you. I know happiness. I know a good, happy society when I see one. And to have two, a lady and a gentleman with a firearm that could cause death in the same room as us means nobody is happy here. Everybody is scared of something, right? Because if I was mayor, I would not allow guns in my place. I would have dogs. I would have dogs here, not guns. Because my dogs would tell me, hey, this, this person's acting up. And they'd tell me immediately. Because my dogs love me and I love my dogs. I have healthy dogs. I'm a dog trainer. My dogs tell me who are unhealthy. And I would know that every single one of you is unhealthy, especially, what's his name? Andrew Weissman? Is that your name, Andrew Weissman? So.
We're just letting him talk. Three minutes.
Thank you, sir. You might need to get some of that water. But, so that's who I am. And I'm just letting you know that you can all cry. Cry, cry it out. Love who you really are. See yourself in the mirror and love who you see. Because you're scared of yourselves, you're scared of the community you live in, which is why you have two people with armed, dangerous guns right next to me. What if one of those people was having a bad day? What if one of them had psychotic episode? You don't know that. But they have, I know you're not worried. I'm not worried either. But they have guns that can kill people on them. I would have dogs instead with no guns. Because I love you. I don't threaten people with violence and guns. I have never owned, I was in the military for seven years. Pretty sure none of, most of you haven't served. Most of you, that's why I said most of you, especially, did you serve?
No.
I thought not. But you're the toughest guy here, right?
Yeah.
I served my country, sir, for seven years. And I had to walk a flight deck with an M16 for eight hours in the cold, in the rain, in the snow, protecting, right? Even though I thought it was dumb. And I have never owned a firearm since. Why? Because firearms kill unnecessarily, unnecessary deaths every day. Every day, people die, unnecessary deaths from guns. And are you okay with that? I think you're okay with it, since you're doing nothing about it. You have two people with guns right here, ready to use them anytime. Thank you very much. Have a great one.
Thank you. All right. All right. Bill Kaufman. Bill?
I think that's on a different item.
Bill, were you talking about Edison?
All right.
Is this a public comment about the Edison item?
Mayor, city council, I'm here on behalf of the Pharmacy Plus, which I address, yeah, so I'm not.
This is the time to talk about Edison.
Yeah, that's why, you called me.
I called you because you were the first one to be here. So if you will sit down.
I'll sit down and wait then.
Your time will come.
Thank you.
Okay. I thought so, but I came, you addressed me.
All right.
I didn't know that EV charging was going to be discussed today, but I would like to say a few things about it. Ford was planning to start building some of these vehicles a couple of months ago, and they put it on hold or canceled it. They were going to do it out of the state where they're located because of the lack of interest in these types of vehicles. And then in the past two weeks, five or six car manufacturers have canceled their plans to build these vehicles because the public isn't buying it, spending more and all this stuff. And when I hear about these expensive charging stations that Edison wants to build, I don't understand. understand that either, because if you live at Laguna Woods, you pay Golden Rain $240, I think, a year. They install a gizmo in your carport. You plug your car into it right there. You don't have to go take it to some parking lot somewhere where you won't have a ride back. So basically, I'm just amazed to even hear this still being talked about, because it looks like the market has headed away from it. Also, when you come to something like this where you have these charging stations, then you've got Edison, and they've got maybe a public-private partnership with the government or something like that. It can lead to restrictions on how much charging you can do and stuff like that. So I think the free market's a better way to go, but when you're looking at car manufacturers and multiples moving away from building these vehicles, there's a reason for it.
Thank you, Mrs. Willis. Lauren Lutzenheiser. Lauren?
Yeah, Lauren Lutzenheiser, I'm a 521C, Cary, Oregon. I'm a part-year resident. Rest of the time, I live in Portland. I've had some visits with Councilperson Horn. I'm with the Concerned Citizens Environmental Group, so we've been kind of looking at a variety of issues, including energy, and I'm a retired... I think the rates are the rates, I think it'd be very difficult to determine what the effect is on actual residents of the city, because we really don't know how many people in the village are enrolled in, in CARE, and we don't really know how many might be enrolled or might be eligible. And in all cases, unless people have upgraded units and they've put money into or had a high entry cost, if they've been here for a while and have close to, originally, we hear stories about, the other day, Concerned Citizens, we had a woman who had a neighbor with 90-year-old options or had anything else explained to them. This isn't the HOA's business. It's not. It's between residents and Edison, so we have no idea, you know, what the distribution looks like, how many people are paying huge amounts of money now, how they would be affected by any of these kinds of things. So I think, and I've, I've had an email exchange very briefly with, with Chris, to do very innovative things in terms of energy efficiency planning and demonstration and implementation kinds of things. And I think Laguna Woods is nicely positioned to do that. But again, the HOA's can't touch it. G R F can't touch it. The city has some responsibilities in this area, and the city has a really good track record in terms of windows replacement program. The city also has, I think, a really good climate adaptation plan that specifically talks about energy efficiency in, in residence and supporting that, and even some exploration. This was done a number of years ago, but exploring novel ways to finance these things for people. So I think there's a lot that could be done, but I don't think we really have our hands around the scale of the, the problem or potential. And with Chris, and share some of the information I have about what's going on with the state, and maybe there's an opportunity here for the city.
Thank you very much, Lauren. We'll follow up. Thank you. Yes, a quick comment.
Thank you. I took a moment for these, the CARE program and the Vila program. As I am, and I have moderate confidence in this, the federal poverty level that you have to, if you want to be at 100% of the federal poverty level to qualify for one of these programs, is only $13,000 for a $130,000. And that is your total household income before deductions. It's not your, your adjusted gross income. So it's, it's a pretty low level of income in order to qualify for these programs.
Thank you. That was my comment as well. Yes.
Just one other quick comment. According to the census, the average income for Laguna Woods is $57,000. The average income. So yes, there are people with more, but there's a lot of people with less, so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Barbara Kiefer, am I pronouncing that correct?
Yes, you did. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
And I just have a couple of questions. I'm a part-time resident of Laguna Woods. I'm only here December through April. So I'm wondering how the billing for the new P U C O thing, how will that affect me? Will, will, will I have a basic, will my, because I hardly have any bills in the summertime, will that rate go up? And I don't quite understand what you mean by, could you please explain electrification? I don't know what that means. Thank you.
Do you want to answer?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Please come up.
Electrification refers to the transition from gas-powered vehicles to electric vehicles and building electrification, so building buildings to electrification.
What was your other question?
The effect of rates.
Pardon?
I'll have to get back to you on the part-time rate issue. I'm not familiar.
I, I think, actually, if she pays a monthly fee when she's gone, it doesn't matter if she's here or gone. She still pays the fee, so I don't think it changes whether she leaves or does. I don't know, unless she rents it out or something. Is she here? If you're here, if you own a place and you leave, you still pay a monthly fee. You don't turn your electricity off, do you?
We turn, we turn right now.
You turn it down, but you're still using electricity. Things are running in your, it would, if, if you're not present, one way you could look at it is that if you're not present, you're, you're using less, which is what she's also speaking to. She, she's trying, we're trying, she's trying to, her theory is, and I'm not trying to take sides here, I have a very high rate, even though I don't. So it's up there. And, and I'm talking about people who in third mutual have dryers, know that dryer really puts it, raises your rate. I don't use one. And, but I feel like my furnace has a hard time at times keeping up, and I keep my house pretty cool. So she will have a rate either way.
I understand that, but I'm, there's, there's going to be a base rate?
Yes.
And that base rate will increase, correct?
Yes. The restructuring will cause an increase to the base rate would go down if you're not using any of your appliances. One thing also to keep into consideration for high bill usage is when you are using those high-energy appliances, such as a dryer, such as a dishwasher, that you manage your behavior when you use them. If you are on time of use, for instance, and you're using your dryer or your dishwasher between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m., that rate will be hiked up, or you're charging your electric vehicle or your electric golf cart during that time, that is going to be the prime rate where it will be a lot higher.
So I have one more question. In the state where I reside, you have P, which is a basic monthly income, but you have a catch-up month at the end of the month, at, at the end of the year. So the CARE program isn't ending.
Other area of having dual residences is you could go on to a program where you can make payment plan?
No. No, what I'm asking you is, on the CARE program, you never have to play, do catch-up. Your bill is never going to be, there's never going to be a big amount at the end. Or if you move, you have to pay that in order to get the money? No.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't think so, was it? No.
Your bill monthly, yeah, it reduces your monthly volumetric rate. And, and something also where, you know, another way that customers could save, now that I'm thinking about it, is medical baseline. So if you are dependent on medical equipment and you need electricity constantly, that's another program that you can apply for, and you need a doctor's note, and there's an applicat-
All right. Before we go here, yes, why don't you come up here?
Thank you.
You're Lauren's wife.
What?
Are you Lauren's wife?
No.
No?
My name is Anne Beltran. I've been a resident for over four years, and I have two comments. One is that when you look at SoCal Edison's Pathway 2045, which is on their website, and it, which takes you through the electrification of the, the jurisdiction to 2045, well, yes, based on the majority of customers, and maybe by 2045, have less, you know, less money being spent. However, for a village that is already starting with 95% electrification, it's a bit of a mirage. And also, when you look at the 36 cents per rate, per kilowatt, going down to 26 cents, we have to keep in mind for our residents that that 26 is not static, and that the rate proposals that SoCal Edison is filing with the state increase by, you know, up to 40% over the coming years. I mean, they've filed like for, what, about a 10% increase for just the coming year. So I think that the residents of Laguna Woods Village, which is highly electrified, need to know that rates are going to keep going up for them, and that anything the city can do to help channel rebates or any kind of aid to help people with insulation or, you know, heat pumps, that kind of thing would be highly valuable in the coming years to the residents. My second question is very specific, because I'm an owner of solar panels. And so our situation is that we'll go from what is now a zero-dollar bill every month to a $51 bill because of the fixed charge. Well, I'm fine with that, but what I'm wondering is, will the fact that we're charged a lower rate of 26 cents, that means that under net metering, our return, our credit on our bill will go up every month? Can I use that credit to pay the $51? That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that has a comment on this particular issue that would like to speak? Now, go ahead, Catherine. You have three minutes, Catherine. Don't blow it.
It's unfortunate that we don't teach in the schools education, our economic education, because any utility, and we have the water district, same thing, that we've had to make adjustments. A utility, it has a fixed cost. So like with water, when you turn the faucet on, you expect water to come out. Now, that isn't going to happen if we don't have all the pipes that don't leak, we don't have the water that flows for, in our case, we buy it from Northern California or the Colorado River. And electric utility is the same thing. You have a power plant that has to generate electricity, and it has a big capital cost, close to 80, 90% of the cost of that power plant is its capital cost. Doesn't cost a lot to run it, but the capital cost to have it there. And the same is true with electricity. Like for water, we have pipes in the ground. Electricity, you have the, the lines go, you know, in the ground or above, and you see all the transmission lines. And those transmission lines are, cost a lot of money to put in, and they're very expensive. But whether you send one electron, one electron down the line or not, you still have to pay for it. And what Edison is doing is finally adjusting so that they recover in the base cost, whether somebody buys any electricity or not, what it costs to have that infrastructure in place. Because if you don't have the infrastructure, then it doesn't make any difference, because you could throw the switch and no lights come on. You have to have the infrastructure, and there's a cost, and it's mostly the capital cost, and that has to be paid for. And that's all they're doing in the adjustment here. I can see that they're dropping 10, you know, 10, what is it, 10 cents per kilowatt hour in the usage, but they're making it up because they know, and what has happened, particularly with people who have solar panels, and the previous speaker just mentioned it, she wasn't paying anything for her electric bill, because she was able to, everything she generated herself was to eliminate any electricity. That doesn't mean that the utility to have the wires there in case her, her, you know, solar panels weren't working, or it was dark and she didn't have a battery, she still has that infrastructure behind her and she wasn't paying for it. And that's what has driven this change over the last 20 years, here in California particularly, with everybody putting in solar panels, and then many of them were not paying the real cost it is for have the infrastructure supported. And those of us who aren't using solar panels and don't have that benefit, we're carrying the cost for the people who invested in solar panels. And that's all, that's, it's, it's economics, and that all, that's all it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. All right. Yes, a final comment from the audience. Yes.
Yeah, Robert Cunningham. I think the reason why they're making this adjustment is because we have to pay for that white elephant down 20 miles down, down the coast to San Antonio Free, so somebody has to pay for that error in judgment, and we get stuck with it. And regarding the person who is not here a lot of the time, yes, her rate is definitely going to go up, because she's going to be paying $51 a month compared to what she would have been paying very, very little if she was not here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll close the public comments. We'll start on our left.
Okay.
Councilmember Moore.
I, I think this is complicated. I don't think it's clear. There are lots of moving parts in this, in my estimation. I do see, I do have to agree that fixed costs, which was what Catherine Freshley was referring to, are a problem a lot of people don't see, because even if you don't turn your electricity on, you do nothing. You think, I'm going to turn everything off in my house because I don't want to use anything. Believe me, I think about what I can turn off, and I turn off lights, keep a lot of rooms dark. You still are using power. It's coming, it's because it's there when you want it, and to have it there for you to be able to turn it on costs money. It's not, I'm trying to think of something that I, a good analogy, because the water is another one, that the water's in the pipes, ready for me to turn it on whether I turn my water on or not. It's there, and there's a cost to get it there and have it ready for me, and it's true with the power too. I, I do see this is, is a very complicated thing, and I, I understand it. I mean, some of the moving parts, some of them are a little bit more complicated. The issue of the income is a complicated one for us too, because I think there was a reference to averages. The problem with averages, you can take a person that's three feet tall and the second person is seven feet tall, and they, so they both average at five feet. Neither one is five feet tall. So averages have their problems, because they take everything and lay it out flat. You're better off, in my estimation, many times, to not use averages and to use modes, which is the most common, like the most common amount of rain we get isn't the average, it, what usually, is what usually falls, and it's been rather different. But in my estimation, I think some of you have noticed, at least if I, when I look at my bill, how many of you look back and see how much you used the year before at that same month? I do the same thing, because I'm kind of curious, because I think, wow, it's really cold this year, and I notice that I, whether, whether the temperature's the same or not, my bill went up. And so I really saw some huge increases, and I think this is affecting the people in our community. When we say average of what our average salary is, what we have, and this is happening to all of us, we're all growing older, but the longer you live and your money, if it doesn't keep growing, then it kind of stagnates, and you wind up being stuck in a situation where, this is why inflation is so bad, and we don't like it, because the, the people in the fixed income really get hurt. Their money doesn't grow, and it puts greater burden on them. Those are the people that I think that this program is aimed to help and is directed to, because even these averages, we do have, I have to refer to it again, we do have the lowest income in the county, and it's because of what we're talking about, older people generally, and their incomes didn't grow. So hopefully, I think we ought to keep our eyes on this. I think it's complicated, and I think it's an attempt to level out some of this. We'll have to see how this plays out. Go ahead.
Thank you. Shantia.
When we talk about electrification, I think there's two things going on here. Today, we've been talking mostly about money, cost, how you get things in there to, to have the power available. But the other half of it, of course, is green energy, and we have a, a sense of thinking that if we're driving electric golf carts and using electric, electric vehicles, that we are, we are more green. But the point is, if you use fossil fuels to get the electricity to power the plug-in for your electric car... to power the plug-in for your electric car, you know, there's still fossil fuels out there. And I'd like to ask our SCE representative if you know what percentage of the electricity that you sell or that you provide comes from renewable sources or comes from fossil fuel? Whether you buy it from somebody else or whatever.
Our current mix is approximately 43% renewable. And we're poised to meet the state regulations by 2045 as well. So we are continuing to become more and more green as we go along. We, we do also offer a green rate. We have an application before the CPUC to increase the usage of the green rate. But currently, we're at capacity. So that is where customers can opt into 100% green. And so we're hopeful that, you know, perhaps they will relook into that application and increase our ability to sell that rate.
And what are the state goals that you're poised to meet? A certain percentage by a certain year?
Yes, 80% reduction from 1990 levels by 2045.
Okay. Thank you.
Please stay up here because a lot of people want to know a customer service number, where they can call. Because I know you have a website, but I got to tell you, I cannot sign on to it. It tells me my street does not exist. It doesn't give me Laguna Woods as a city to sign on. So I don't even have an account if I want to change from time of use or to any other rate. So first, a customer service number, please.
Perfect. And while I'm looking that up, I wanted to touch base. I did talk with your city manager about your specific situation. I shared that with our escalated customer service. And it would take five to 10 business days for someone to call you back. You do have to accept block numbers. I, I'm not sure if you have that ability with the phone number, but happy to talk to you about that offline if.
Are you talking about the replacement of electrical appliances? If your income qualified, if they're really old? Is that what you're talking about?
No, I know that you were having issues with accessing Edison through customer service based on. I believe you transferred from the Acacia program.
I'm also interested in the appliance replacement program, and you gave me a number. But they said, oh, that's for single-family homes. They gave me another number, and that was for an apartment building that I don't own. So I need those numbers, too.
Sure. Yeah, I will definitely provide the customer service number to Chris to share with the community.
You don't have them right now, a customer service line?
I'm working to pull that up right now.
Okay.
Well, we'll be here.
Okay, then please also give him for calling to have appliances changed out. I have to tell you, I'm on your care rate. We have no washer, no dryer, no stove, no dishwasher, and no garbage disposal. We heat one room sometimes for an hour or two at night. And I am very good at conserving, too. For years, my bill was $25. I unplug things when, so I don't get the electricity. And my bill is now over $100. So I'm living in one cold room, not eating hot food. And I just want you to be aware that I don't know what your executives get paid, but your rates are too high. And, and we need to do something about it. Because an average may not, may only be an average, but it's a snapshot. And it gives you a look into what's happening in the community. And the more we're paying for the electric, the less we can pay for medication or food or new appliances. So I would appreciate those numbers. And somebody did ask me how you determine income qualified if you don't get our tax returns. They just wanted to know that.
Yes, it's a simple, I think, attestation of what your income level is on an annual basis. And the customer service number is 1-800-655-4555.
655. Okay.
And again, part of the reason, as we're meeting, you know, as we're transitioning to clean energy, there is an anticipated 80% increase in electric usage by 2045. So that will require additional infrastructure. That's substations, that's distribution lines, subtransmission, and transmission. So like Catherine mentioned earlier, there will be an additional investment in this infrastructure. We go before the CPUC in terms of our general rate case on a four-year cycle. Those public participation hearings will be happening in the next couple of months. But that is a big, you know, rationale behind the rate increase is our required investment in the infrastructure. And some of the neighboring cities to Laguna Woods are also impacted by high fire risk area. So for the past three years, or I believe in 2018 is when we began transitioning, our grid hardening to replace our bare wires with insulated wires and other things, our wood poles with fire wrap poles and other things. So that was an additional investment to make sure that our grid is resilient and ready for climate change.
What about undergrounding wires?
We are looking at undergrounding in terms of targeting, targeted undergrounding. And what we have to manage is that affordability component as well. Because it can be five to 10 times more expensive to underground versus replacing our above-ground equipment with insulated wire.
Because we're having trouble getting fire insurance, and rates in fire insurance are going up. And I'm sure that undergrounding wires, because that's so many things, like trees falling on them in high winds, spark wires. So, I mean, there's, okay, so you're going to get back with us about the phone number to call for appliance replacement?
Right. And oftentimes now, the state has transitioned to third parties to manage our energy efficiency programs. And so I will go ahead and share that website that deals with our residential customers directly.
And are there any upgrades you can make to your website so that when people try to sign on to it, they could actually access it?
I believe we recently went through an upgrade that was implemented perhaps mid to late last year. But I will definitely share your concerns with our team.
Thank you.
Angie, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of comments. First of all, thank you so much for being here and providing information for us. Most of the issues that I wrote down have been addressed. I do agree with Councilwoman Moore that this is a very, very complicated issue. And it is really nice for someone from Edison to be here to address some of these issues so that the residents know that this is an Edison issue, not so much as an issue for the city. So I just want to let the residents know to call Southern California Edison. And, because if you call City Hall, you're going to be referred to Edison. So thank you so much for being here and for providing that information. Yeah, all of the, the comments have just been really wonderful, especially about solar panels that Catherine mentioned. And it's, it's very complicated. And it, you know, I applaud you for coming here for the short period of time and trying to address the issues. But also, you know, I applaud the residents that have come out to hear this presentation. So at least you have a starting point to where you can get some of your questions resolved. And it is complicated, and there's a lot of moving parts. So thank you again for being here. And we look forward to hearing more information if there are any updates. So, but thank you so much. And this is a Southern California Edison issue that should be addressed through Edison. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Annie. Making that clear.
All right. Thank you, and thank you all. Three or four comments that I would like to make. Number one, my wife, the other day, got our 2022 bill, compared it to the 2023 bill, and found that our 2023 with less usage substantially was more than the 2022 bill. So the real world is out there. Number two, the infrastructure has apparently been, I don't know how many litigation items about that, but is apparently old.
Yes.
And poor, very poor repair. And we are now paying for the infrastructure that apparently Edison needs. And it is a fire hazard in the state of California. So, but as suggested, perhaps we do need the infrastructure. Lauren, I'm not sure, Luke, how do you pronounce your last name?
Hudson.
All right. Made a suggestion that, is there something the city can do in conjunction with the village? And I thought that was a good suggestion. And so I would mention to our city manager that maybe there is something we can do. And the city manager said, okay, you go talk to the California Public Utilities Commission. So I did, last Thursday. And we wrote up a three-minute presentation, like you're entitled to. And they then told us that we only get one minute. And the PUC came down to Laguna, I mean, to Lake Forest. And they met a week ago in Lake Forest. So I'm going to read you my one-minute talk that the city manager had much to do. And they were sitting up there. There were only three of them out of the five. But they're the ones that answer all of your questions because they are the ones that have to approve what is going to happen to the Edison bill and request. My name is Noel Hatch. I am the mayor of the city of Laguna Woods and speak to you today in that capacity. Laguna Woods, with its almost 18,000 residents, is one of the most concentrated communities of older adults in this county, country, with an average age of approximately 75 years. I see firsthand the financial challenges that fixed retirement incomes have on older adults. Those challenges are more acute than ever as inflation causes the cost of housing, food, medicine, and long-term care to increase far in excess of Social Security benefits and accumulated savings. Our hope is this. As you consider prospective utility rate increases and changes in rate structures, please always be mindful of the economic burdens affecting older adults. Too many retirees have worked all their lives only to struggle today with food insecurity, medical debt, and health disparities brought on in part as simply the result of living a long life. To the extent the CPUC can avoid decisions that compound these burdens, we would be most grateful. And then I had lived right at the end, and, and I said to the three that were sitting there, I feel this compelling urge to give you a fist bump, to come up there and do this with each of you. And I said, but I recognize that I can't do that. And I had forgotten that it's a fist bump. And so I said fist and did this. And one of the gals sitting up there, one of the representatives, said, you mean this, and did this to me. So we had this sort of ethereal touching of things. Anyway, I, I think what we have to do is recognize that electricity is here to stay. We, I mean, we do. I'm going home, and I'm going to say, Sally, you will not turn the dishwasher on between the hours of. You will not wash clothes for anybody for this hours and so forth. And I'm not sure what else, but Lauren, we'll see what else might come between the two of us, okay? So anyway, she's gone, but we certainly are conscious, and you're conscious, of life is still beautiful here in the village, even though we're all electric, okay? All right.
And if I could just add, before we move on to the next item, we do have some printed copies of the PowerPoint presentation. So I know many of you are probably going to make your way out right now. But if you wanted to pick one up, the city clerk has them. So anyway, just wanted to note that.
And we should have taken a picture earlier because this is the largest crowd we've had at a council meeting with the exception of the cannabis thing. So if you want to go, you're welcome to go now, and we'll move on with the agenda. All right. Where are we? We're in public comments. Does anyone else have a matter they wish to present to us? All right. No, they are not coming. Here that. Oh, that's right. Oh, that's. All right. And now we have general comments from Bill Kaufman. Bill, if you'll come up, and Bill will be followed by Herman Jensen.
Mayor, City Council, here I am again. I just have a quick comment on the gentleman that was talking about guns. And in our, in public forums that you see every night on your television, you see some wacko coming in, you people are sitting up there as targets. To me, having these people here is what we always need. I mean, you need protection these days. Unfortunately, that's the case. And believe me, a dog will not outrun a bullet, you know? And so I just had to say that because that was, to me, out of the order. Again, I'm here at Pharmacy Plus. We have, we want to put a wellness center in Laguna Woods. We're having a very difficult time finding a location for a number of reasons, which I'll talk about just briefly. But I wanted to know that you do have an application from a gentleman, Aaron Hertzberg, that has a location on Moulton Parkway that complies. I don't know that his application does. But this gentleman's well-known in the industry for securing a location, securing the permit, and turn around and selling that permit to whomever he chooses as the highest bidder, of which you have no control over. And I just wanted to make that aware of, the city manager aware of that. And he can look into that further. Now, looking at locations, we have a library right here. And there is a beautiful location that is a long distance from this library. In order for, you know, anyone, a young person whom ever we're trying to protect to walk up to the location, they've got to cross the street and walk over 1,000 feet. And I'm not sure why that is a sensitive area. I've looked at other areas here that they say they're sensitive. Now, I've worked with Santa Monica, Venice, West Hollywood, Westwood, Corona, among other cities. And they'll look at locations, and there can be variances in them. For instance, you may be in a location where you're here, and there's a fence here, and then other locations here, and you're within 600 feet, and that becomes a sensitive area. I think that, Herman Jensen's going to talk just briefly here. But I believe that if you look at these and understand why they're designated as sensitive and make some logical decisions, you can have a wellness center, which is going to be something I believe that the city would receive and would be very, very beneficial. And again, my mother was here a while ago, but she benefited greatly from herbal products that were available. that were available.
Your time?
Yeah. Okay. Anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Herman?
Good afternoon, Mayor Hatch and City Council. My name is Herman Jensen. I'm a Colwell banker at Town and Country in Claremont. I'm also affiliated with Pharmacy Plus, and I've been making field trips to Laguna Wood whenever it's necessary. And John Noel from the TV station alerted us to one location on 24351 Molton, which is currently holistic massage place, basically across the street. And we thought, of course, immediately it would be a great synergy between those two businesses. We would not drive them out. The opposite, really, we would like to collaborate with them and create this wellness center we have in mind, because they're already providing services that we are seeking also to provide, which would be wonderful. So my basic question is, to the city as a whole, if there is room for modification on one or the other location that is currently available or may come up in the future. I'm fully aware of the sites that were provided to us with the parcel numbers, and it's basically limited to the Home Depot Center and the mortuary center, the Helms Center. And of course, that's out of the question under the current circumstances, so that limits us exclusively to the Home Depot Center, and so that would be it. The Valencia Center South here is shared with Laguna Hills, at least, it's my understanding, so there would be some difficulties to negotiate that, and so, very limited space. So we did our best so far and followed every lead possible, and so we would like to ask, you know, perhaps if there is the possibility of a modification on one or the other sites, perhaps possible. Thank you so much for your time. You have a great afternoon.
Thank you for coming. Are there any others that wish to address us? All right. The presentation and ceremonial matters has concluded, and we move on to public comments on an agenda item, and I'd just ask, does anyone have a comment there? All right. What?
City Treasurer.
That's what I'm coming to now. Thank you. I don't know what I'd do without you sitting here.
We're kind of pushing you along.
All right. We have the Treasurer's Report. She has 30 seconds to give it and we to approve. All right, go ahead, Liz.
We should have had her earlier so she could show everyone.
No, she was fascinated by this.
How well our community is managed.
Thank you. So yes, today I'm presenting the Treasurer's Report for January 31st, 2024. As you may have noticed, we have a new cover page for our Treasurer's Report, and it's basically a summary of the Treasurer's Report, a snapshot, showing a snapshot of how much we have in the financial assets in the bank and financial assets in the held in trust funds. And it also includes a brief explanation of the use of funds and types of investments. So as of January 31st, 2024, we have a total of 14,237,781. It consists of the general fund having 10.7 million and special revenue funds 3.4 million. And I would just like to remind you that the special revenue funds are for legally restricted or committed to expenditures for specified purposes, mainly in public street purposes. The 14-point million, 14.2 million are broken down to cash and cash equivalents of 800,000, 800, 803,990, and pooled money investments in about 8 million. LEF has 823,000, and OSIP has 7.3 million. We also have CDs in, investments in CDs for 5.3 million. That totals a 14 million. During the month of January, we purchased one CD at 245,000 for a term of 48 months at 4.05%. And we also transferred 700,000 from the city's checking account to the OSIP account. Our trust funds, as of January 31st, are to pre-fund future retiree benefits and pension costs, include the servit trust, servit trust account of 135,000, which had a neat loss of just over $1,000. And our SEP trust account, which as of January 31st was at zero, but on January 31st, the city council approved an initial contribution of 163,555, and that contribution will be noted on next month's report. I'll be talking a little bit about internal controls over financial reporting. These are considered each year by the city's independent auditors as a basis for designing audit procedures. One of the characteristics of information and financial reporting that auditors look at is timeliness. It's important to have financial reports readily available in a timely manner to inform decision-making. Timely, the financial reporting requires careful, year-long planning and monitoring. We achieve this by recording activity throughout the year. We post transactions, reconcile bank accounts, and other accounts at month and any timely manner. We use closing checklists for our month-end procedures to ensure all steps are performed. We also follow accounting policies and procedures in every transactions, in every transaction we process. These strategies enable us to reconcile a year-end in a timely manner to be able to close the year-end and prepare us for financial statement audit. During the audit, our auditors may encounter material weaknesses. Material weaknesses are deficiencies that create a reasonable possibility that the city will not prevent or detect slash correct materials, misstatements of its financial statements on a timely basis. Therefore, by having financial reporting done in a timely base, in a timely manner, we can prevent material weaknesses. I would like to note that no material weaknesses have been identified since the city began preparing annual comprehensive financial reports in fiscal year 1415.
Right. And with that, the recommendation is to receive and file the city Treasurer's Report for the month of January 21st.
We will so do. Let me just ask you one quick question. How did it feel, Elizabeth, to prepare a report like this?
How did it feel?
How did it feel? Are you proud of it?
Yes.
You bet you are, aren't you?
Yes.
And thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
And on this item, if we could take a vote to receive and file the Treasurer's Report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we come to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one vote. There will be no separate discussion on those items unless a member of the city council or city staff requests that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion or consideration of action. Members of the public may address the city council on items appearing on the consent calendar, regardless of whether an item is removed for separate discussion or consideration. Do I have a motion?
I did want to, if I could just pull item 73, I have a small typographic correction. So if you wouldn't mind considering 71, 72, and 74, and then we'll come back to the...
All right, we'll pull those, and on the balance?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Now...
Okay.
Treasurer, what is your pleasure on that?
I have a very small correction that I will rightly credit Councilmember Connors for identifying for me. In section 4.12.04 of the proposed policy, there's a sentence that reads, "Employees are not required to disclosure the names or purposes for which a legal drug is taken to city staff." We'd like to revise that to read, "Employees are not required to disclose to city staff the names or purposes for which a legal drug is taken." So we would revise our recommendation accordingly and ask that you move it forward.
We'll ask... Thank you. All right, a second. All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's approved. Public hearings, none. Item nine, city council business. City manager, would you cover number 9.1, please?
Yes, absolutely. Item 9.1 is the first of two discussion items today. This is the El Toro Road and Molton Parkway Water Quality Treatment Project. This is a project that's included in the city's current capital improvement program. It's included as a project with the goal of being completed this current fiscal year. It'll very likely need to be carried over into future fiscal years, but as we've talked about previously, this project has been bid a number of times. We have been unsuccessful for various reasons in being able to award a contract in the bidding solicitations prior to this. Most recently, we bid the project for a fourth time, but we separated it into two phases. So we bid the first phase of the project, which is the work on Molton Parkway, separating the work on El Toro Road into a second phase that we would tackle later. We are, long and short of today's presentation, is we are at a point where we are recommending award of a contract to construct Phase One. I wanted to walk you through the project generally, show you some renderings of it. There are a couple of documents included in your agenda packet. A conceptual planting plan and rendering was included as Attachment A, and then exhibit showing the major drainage area to Phase One, to the vegetated swale on Molton Parkway, was included as Attachment B. This Phase One portion of the work would occur entirely on Molton Parkway, and the ultimate goal would be to treat stormwater runoff from an existing portion of Molton Parkway. It's about a 1.15 acre portion of the southbound travel lanes, roughly located between the intersections with Laguna Woods Village Gates 12 and 16 and El Toro Road. So the area that we're talking about right now, and this is just a representative photograph of the area, is generally on the west side of the southbound travel lanes of Molton Parkway, the sidewalk area, and then a portion of the landscaped area behind the sidewalk. Now, a portion of what you see here running up to the self-storage building, a portion of that is within the city's right-of-way, and a portion of it is actually within the property owned by the self-storage facility. The work we're talking about today would take place entirely on the city's right-of-way. So we're not talking about encroaching onto private property at all. What we're looking to do is create a vegetated swale that starts at the top of the screen here, so it would start closer to the self-storage driveway and continue south. So if you think of that road right now, as you're driving south on Molton Parkway and you pass the self-storage driveway, you drive slightly downhill as you get to the intersection with Molton and El Toro. So the bioswale would exist behind the sidewalk, which in this image is shown as kind of the sandy-colored portion in between the gray roadway surface and the swale itself. This is a planting plan, so it shows that there's a variety of different plants that would be planted in the area. Of the plants proposed, four of the five exist out there already, so we tried to use the existing plant palette, obviously arranged different, but the same type of species that are already in the area. With the addition of one ground cover, Berkeley sedge, that would be the dark green that you see here throughout the swale configuration. That is a lower ground cover that was specifically identified for its ability to withstand being periodically inundated when the swale fills with water, to also then being able to ride out the summer months and the warmer months where it would be dry and sunnier. So it's a resilient ground cover in that fashion. It also is, the body of the planting is such that it will allow the planting to filter out some of the contaminants in the water as it flows through. So essentially, water would enter the swale from the top of this image through a new drain in the sidewalk area, so it would run under the sidewalk, taking advantage...
I saw that small arrow.
I'm sorry, yeah, my arrow is at the very...
Little.
I was going to say, it's very up here.
There it is.
There's a little black rectangle here. That's showing the approximate location of the inlet that would take advantage of the existing topography of Molton Parkway to be able to funnel stormwater runoff into the swale. It would run underneath the sidewalk, daylight on the landscaped side, and allow water to flow through five different levels of the swale. These brown blocks that you see periodically, those are Gabion structures, or more conventionally, I think people tend to associate them with rocks in cages, that allows some of the, it provides some structure for the swale, but allows water to move through it and over it as well. Those swales would help to slow down the water as it moves through the swale, rather than it running downhill and picking up a great amount of speed. When it gets through all of those structures to the bottom here, it would then, whatever's left, and so we would expect that there would be less of the water at that point, because some of it would have settled out higher in the swale, it would definitely be moving slower, because it's gone through these different structures. At that point, whatever's remaining and not infiltrating into the ground would enter a new drain, again, under the sidewalk that daylights out into the street, where the water would be returned to the street in a cleaner, slower, and less plentiful manner than before. The drainage area that the swale would capture, and this is included in your agenda packet as well, but the swale is shown towards the bottom right of the image in a green rectangle. Again, the El Toro Water District driveway is shown here, where my cursor is, and then generally to the right of the image off-screen, that would be the Molton and El Toro intersection and the Arco AMPM downstream. Give me just one second. The area that would drain to the swale, again, taking advantage of natural topography, is the light blue area that's boxed off here. This is, again, approximately 1.15 acre portion of Molton Parkway that would then drain into the swale and then re-enter the road after that. That's not to say that during significant rain events, all of that water would get into the swale. You're still going to have sheet flow on the roadway, but this is the treatment area that it's proposed to treat. The Councilmember Connors had a comment before I go on.
The gray shaded area to the south of the sidewalk and bioswale, what does the shading represent?
So this is an engineering exhibit. Those are contour lines, so that's, if you look, if you blew it up and you looked at it larger, you would see that it's showing that the topography of the hillside is increasing.
Doesn't have anything to do with ownership or anything?
It doesn't have anything to do with ownership, no. So this is what it would look like afterwards. This is a rendering of, again, renderings are kind of highly conceptual and limited to what the software does, but what I would say...
One crisp.
Yeah. What I would say is that what's out there right now, and I'm just going to click back a couple of slides, this is what's out there right now. If you can see, and the projector isn't great about this, but reconstructed as a swale, it would generally look more lush in the area. You're going to have more of that Berkeley sedge ground cover within the swale itself. You're going to have some replanted trees, so it will require the removal of five existing trees on the property. There are four Australian willows and one California pepper that would need to be removed. We're not going to be able to replant those trees. We would need to plant new trees in their place in slightly different locations on the property. So you would have some smaller growth trees initially that would then have the opportunity to grow a little bit stronger, but it is much more vegetated than is out there right now. These are all very water-efficient plantings. Again, the sedge that occupies the majority of it is a ground cover that is intentionally proposed to withstand kind of extreme weather conditions at either end. It would be, you know, a swale is a ditch, basically, so there would be a grade difference between the sidewalk and the swale itself. But over time, as the plantings mature, the... But over time, as the plantings mature, the sight of that ditch is gonna be somewhat mitigated. It's gonna look a lot flatter than it does initially. For those who are familiar with other bioswales in the city, we have a longer bioswale along Ridge Route Drive in the vicinity of the dog park. It's the same general concept. This is a little wider, it's a little flatter, and the plantings are different, but it's the same idea. So we went through a competitive bid solicitation process to construct this first phase. We received those bids at the beginning of February. Two bids came in, one for just about $468,000 and one for about $312,000. The $312,000 bid was identified after staff's review as the lowest-cost responsive bidder, so we are recommending award to that contractor today. There is some funding in the city's existing budget for this project, all out of the American Rescue Plan Act federal dollars. We are recommending an additional $228,092 be added to the project, again, from the American Rescue Plan Act appropriations. That would bring the total project cost to just under $415,000. Now, we would be hopeful that, once the project is completed, we're not in a position where we had to spend the entirety of the monies we've set aside for contingency purposes, so we would hope that there would be some money left over at the end that would be able to be returned to the American Rescue Plan Act unallocated fund balance. But for today's purposes, the project would be approximately $415,000. Our recommendations are three, four-part today. I'm just gonna read through them all. The council could take them individually or collectively, it's entirely up to you. But staff's recommendation would be to approve the El Toro Road and Molten Parkway Water Quality Treatment Project Phase One design plans and specifications as prepared by the project engineer, and to approve a notice of exemption for the El Toro Road and Molten Parkway Water Quality Treatment Project Phase One, finding that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and authorize the city manager to cause the notice of exemption to be filed pursuant to applicable law. And three, to adopt a resolution titled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Amending and Adopting the Fiscal Year's 2023-25 Budget and Work Plan for Fiscal Year 2023-24, Commencing July 1, 2023, and Ending June 30, 2024, and Fiscal Year 2024-25, Commencing July 1, 2024, and Ending June 30, 2025, Related to Allocation of Existing Federal Grants Fund, American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus, Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, Appropriations to the El Toro Road and Molten Parkway Water Quality Treatment Project." And finally, to award a contract agreement to Leonita Builders Incorporated for the construction of the El Toro Road and Molten Parkway Water Quality Treatment Project Phase One in the amount of $311,547, plus authorize change orders not to exceed 10% of the base amount, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract agreement and approve change orders subject to approval of the contract agreement as deformed by the city attorney. With that, there's an opportunity for public comments, and then I'm.
All right, are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for the passage of this entire project.
So move.
All four items.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, did, sorry. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Is any of that funding going to come back, do you think, with the fire station? Isn't some of that required because of it?
No, this is entirely, this is separate from it, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
We go to item nine point two, fiscal year budget.
Do at mid-year, taking a look at our existing budget and identified three budget adjustments we would like the city council to consider today. Very briefly, the first budget adjustment, there is an existing allocation of $84,896 to a catch basin retrofit project that the city council previously removed from the city's capital improvement program at staff's recommendation. The money, though it was removed from the capital project, or from the capital program, the money is still technically allocated in our budget. So we'd like to move that approximately $85,000 from that now-defunct project over to the City Hall Public Library project to allow us to purchase furnishings for the outdoor activity room, planter pots, add some additional landscaping to the patio. The library, after they moved in, they identified a couple of things that we would like to do for them as the landlord, an additional window shade, some updated signage. We've had to make some modifications to the retractable doors for ease of use. We don't expect to require the entire $85,000 balance, but we'd like to move that into the City Hall project, finish these last remaining expenditures, and then come back to the council with a recommendation to unallocate that money and have it be available for programming for other American Rescue Plan Act-funded purposes. All $85,000 of that is federal dollars. Those are the existing ARPA monies that, again, are just tied up in another project right now. The second budget adjustment also relates to the ARPA monies. This is, there was a Ridge Route Drive landscape project that the city undertook in a previous fiscal year. That project is now complete. We didn't need to spend the entirety of the contingency for that project, and so there's approximately $34,000 that's available to be returned to the unallocated fund balance, meaning that the city council could allocate it towards other projects in the future. But just as a matter of function, we would need to officially unallocate it from the project to which it's currently allocated. And then finally, the city applied for a grant from CalRecycle, the state agency that deals with waste and recycling, to fund the City Hall Battery Drop-Off Program. This is a program that's been going on for a while, but residents are able to bring batteries to City Hall to safely dispose of them. We were successful in obtaining a grant for just under $26,000 to help fund that program through February of 2027, which is good news for the city, but we do need the council to officially increase appropriations to allow us to be able to spend that grant. We can actually spend that grant starting with the bills that we pay for that service in this month, and then moving forward, basically until 2027, or until those funds are exhausted. I'm not sure that they're gonna get us all the way to 2027, but it's $25,580 we didn't have before for a service that we plan to continue to offer. So our recommendation is, again, two-part, which you're able to take as one if you wish. The first is to adopt a resolution titled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Amending and Adopting the Fiscal Year's 2023-25 Budget and Work Plan for Fiscal Year 2023-24, Commencing July 1, 2023, and Ending June 30, 2024, and Fiscal Year 2024-25, Commencing July 1, 2024, and Ending June 30, 2025, Related to Allocation of Existing Federal Grants Fund, American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus, Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Appropriations to the City-Maintained Catch Basins Full Capture Systems Retrofit Project, City Hall Public Library Project, and Ridge Route Drive Landscape Project." And then the second, to adopt a resolution titled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Amending and Adopting the Fiscal Year's 2023-25 Budget and Work Plan for Fiscal Year 2023-24, Commencing July 1, 2023, and Ending June 30, 2024, and Fiscal Year 2024-25, Commencing July 1, 2024, and Ending June 30, 2025, Related to an Increase in State of California Grants Fund Appropriations for an Award from the State of California Household Hazardous Waste Grant Program, Cycle 41, HD 41, Fiscal Year 2023-24, Small Project Cycle, Grant Number HD 41-23-0039." And with that, there's an opportunity for public comments and then council discussion.
All right, are there any comments from the public on either of these? Hearing none, I would like to have these, if the city manager does not object, have these adopted individually.
That's fine.
All right. Have a motion for the adoption of Resolution Number One, amending, adopting the fiscal year's budget and so forth.
How do we adopt the first resolution?
All right, is there a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. I'll now entertain a motion for the second resolution.
I move we adopt the second resolution.
Second.
All in, any comment? All in favor?
I did have a comment.
Oh, you had a comment on that one?
I'm sorry. I had a question. To do with the equipment that you're going to, seeking to put in the, into the activity room. I think I'd kinda like to know what you're going to put in there. And also, are you considering putting those heaters, getting those available?
Yeah, so we have been talking to the library about what types of furniture would work for them. Anything that is purchased for out there, the idea is that it would be temporary, so it would be put away in the closet at night rather than left out overnight. We can certainly come back if there's interest, I can just follow up with you individually with what the kind of thinking is. We haven't picked anything out yet, but the library's given some ideas on the types of furniture that would be.
Well, I noticed someone was going to use it, and I thought that, I would think, one would like to have those outdoor heaters might be something one would consider there. That's something, anyway, I'd like to.
Okay.
Think about that.
Yep, absolutely.
All right.
That was it, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes.
Thank you.
We now come to item 10. We did arrive through the entire agenda.
Pardon me, I'm sorry, I did have another question.
Yes.
I realized, when someone uses that room, are we charging them, or is that a city's service?
So right now, the council hasn't adopted a use policy for it, so we're limiting the use to basically governmental county, city functions. We do plan on bringing a use policy before the council that would, you know, open up the possibility of us renting it to third parties. We're not doing that currently, and our, in talking with the library, we wanted to give them a chance to establish their ongoing programming before we create some sort of third-party use policy, so that we don't end up giving away all the days and times that they wanted to do something. So our thinking right now is we'll come back to you with a use policy in a couple of months.
I'm not even asking for it, I'm just curious how it's playing out.
Yeah, right now, it's just governmental use.
Okay, that works, thank you.
That was a very appropriate question, because I'm going to read an email I've received in this morning's, no, February 23rd, Coffee and Conversation. It comes from the office of Katrina Foley. All right. Good morning, neighbor. Join my team at the beautiful new Laguna Woods Library this Friday morning at 8:00 a.m., February 23rd, 19, or 2024, for my first coffee and conversation of the year. Ask questions and chat with neighbors about issues impacting your community over your morning cup of coffee, and that meeting will be held across the way.
I just wanna quote what it said, "It's recent," I thought about that. I saw that too. See, that was Friday, Friday.
It's this Friday. It comes up on us very fast.
Forty-eight degrees is what it says, and let me see, well, I can't tell. Pardon? Let me look here, well, I won't go through it, but I think some heaters out there would be something to think on, it appears to me.
So there's a big coffee pot, I presume, then, all right. Okay, let's find out what is going on in our county, and we will start with Coastal Green Belt Authority.
The authority will meet next.
We're tired of meeting next month.
We meet every other month, so.
Okay, all right, we want a full report next meeting, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, you're on. All right, Orange County Fire Authority, we meet tomorrow.
Yeah, we're tired of meeting tomorrow.
And the big thing that I would report is that our fire chief, Chief Fennessey, will appear for the first time in public after his prostate surgery, and so we're all excited to have him back and functioning again, even though he's been functioning at home. Nothing exciting companies, some coming particularly, but a few contract matters in closed session, but the authority is doing well. They're responding well, and we heard a little bit about them from the sheriff's department, and it is always a pleasure to see one of your cars inside the Village Gates. We know that it isn't for good news necessarily, but it's nice to know you're there, okay? Thank you, Captain.
But at the next meeting, we don't.
We're packing two dogs.
All right. Okay, now, the library board, what have you got for us?
Well, I'm not going to, we haven't met, but I did wanna point out, if you give a chance to go over to the library, there are a number of wonderful authors that are gonna be speaking in this general area. One of them is going to be down, I can't remember who they are, but I saw it on my email, it's going to be down at Laguna Hills, and there's also another, these are really latest authors, and I think you might enjoy hearing them, at Lake Forest. But the flyers, I'm sure, are in our library right now, and I would make sure you check it out, because these are, these are current, good-selling authors and some good books, and they're right here for you to hear.
And those of us who.
Part of the OC system.
None of you saw it, but those of us saw it, the couples walking back and forth.
I know.
There was an eight- or nine-year-old coming along, and apparently, they have had children coming in and using our little library, which is wonderful. All right, mosquito and vector control, and someday, someday, council member Horn will say we've accomplished our mission, the mosquitoes have been totally eradicated. All right, what have you got for us?
I wish. No, we dedicated most of our time to saying goodbye to existing people and welcoming a lot of our temporary workers, because even though it's not hot, there's still a lot of mosquitoes, especially with all the water. So, again, go around your property and make sure there's no standing water, especially in those little saucers. We have a really nice new vector inspector, so if you need help from vector control, they'll come out for fire ants, or for mosquitoes, or for any number of things. Typhus is a big deal right now in the county, but here, we're very lucky because of the cat club. We don't have any feral cats running around, and thanks to the coyotes, very few skunks and rabbits and porcupines, or all the other things that carry fleas. So we're pretty lucky here, and I have not, that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. And now, the San Joaquin Transportation Corridor Agency, which is no longer the only agency that collects monies for traveling on the freeways, are they now? What have you got for us?
That's true, I will, I will address that at the conclusion of my remarks. First is that we have a new contract to update and maintain the toll roads app. We gave this contract to Acxiom, which has had the previous contract, and they were also the most qualified and low-cost bidder when we took this out to bid. The toll roads app has received the Excellence in Tech Award from the International Bridge Toll and Tunnel Association. There are two and a half million account holders, there are 250,000 daily transactions, about 25% of the, all the payments made to the toll roads come through the app. And the more that people use the website and the app, the less they use the call center, and the less expensive it is to run that. The other thing we did is that we hired, on a bench basis, on a standby basis, we accepted the application of Bank of America Securities, Goldman Sachs, and JP Morgan to help the toll roads position themselves to more effectively market their bonds. They will help solidify the toll roads finances, identify refunding and early paydowns, so that we can reduce our debt service. They will assist with marketing strategies, strategies, they'll help us prepare documentations, and recommend ways that we can improve our financial position and make our bonds attractive to investors. So far, the toll roads has paid down millions and millions of dollars in debt through refunding and advanced paydowns, and saved millions and millions in interest, and we're actually in the billion-dollar range now. But what I will say about toll roads is that. But what I will say about toll roads is that a lot of people have said in the past, well, all we want to do is pay off the bonds and make the roads free. And you can see, these roads actually belong to Caltrans, although they're operated by the toll roads. And as the mayor has just indicated, Caltrans is not in the mode of providing more free transportation, they are in the mode of adding more toll lanes. So I think it's pretty likely that, once these bonds are paid off, the tolls will continue to be collected, and they will be used for other transportation initiatives in Orange County. That's all I have.
It is certainly a convenience to drive 241 and 261 and get out of Orange County. No question about it. What are your bonds, what are, what is the, not the premium, but what is the interest rate now, do you know?
Around 4%.
At 4%? And the new bonds, you're thinking of...
Well, they'll be lower, we won't refinance unless we get them lower.
Because interest rates and bonds are down to 3% on long-term.
But a lot of these are, are long-term bonds, you know, 25-year bonds, so we have to wait till they're callable before we can pay them down.
Yeah, okay. If you want to market them, the market's changing.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, Carol, more. I don't want to hear today that there was no meeting of the Watership Management Area Committee or whatever. I want to hear what they've done. Now, the community is here in force, wanting to hear it. What is your report?
Actually, that is a fact, what you previously said. However, I, previous to this meeting, it was at the Orange County Water Association meeting, and there was a presentation there of a proposed project by Molten Aguilwater to, I gave a slide presentation here about cleaning up. When the water, when it rains, the water washes the street, but all those oils are lifted and all those particles from your tires, and, and that water now carries it, and it flows off and can be contaminating. But one of the things that you can check and see, we contributed to the Dairy Fork Project, which is just up the street, and it just so happens I went by there and took some pictures, because I wanted to see how it was looking, and it's looking pretty good. But Molten Aguil has a proposed project, but there's some questions on it, having to do with cost and so forth, and that's to further clean up and collect water. In their case, they want to store it at, is that, I think it's Laguna Aguil Lake. I think I spoke to that earlier, and they could, you know, put some in there, and they, they have some plans to do a project. We're moving toward, we're, we're far more efficient with water, even though I realize we need to save water, we really are more efficient than, we've come a long way. A lot of recycled water in the, in our area, and particularly South County, I'd say it's strongest in the state, probably, I would bet. South County has more recycled water than, than possibly the other remainder part of the state. I, I'm making that statement without verifying that part, but it's tremendous, the amount of recycled water. But in addition to that, in Orange County, we have direct potable reuse, because 80% of the county lives in the north part of the county, believe it or not. It's hard to believe, 80%. We're the 20% in South County. We're the people who don't have access to the aquifer, depends on how you look at it. Legally, it's never been adjudicated, but right now, we don't have access, and, and that water that's stored there belongs to North County people. And they do a great, a fantastic job, they lead the world in cleaning up water, reusing it, putting it back into the aquifer, and then using it again. That's direct potable reuse, and that's where much of the country is headed. But anyway, that project that Molten Aguil had would lead to possible direct potable reuse, so that's where we are.
It's interesting, on the water issue, Jean Hernandez.
Yes, he was there.
Jean is, went on the Fire Authority Board when I did, he's been mayor of Yorba Linda, he just resigned his mayoral assignment to accept an appointment on the Yorba Linda Water. And because he said, the action is really there in water right now, and that aquifer that we have, Catherine, we don't have aquifer in El Toro, so most of it is up there, so water is an issue that is...
Storage, probably, bigger one.
And storage is a major, major issue right now, and he was fascinated, talking about Jean, his, his, tomorrow night is his swan song at the Fire Authority, and he's being honored, but he said this was an opportunity to go in and be on the cutting edge of a situation in Orange County, which is critical, obviously.
We're leaders, it's hard to believe in the world, Orange County really, truly is a leader in water, recycling, and direct potable reuse. I doubt if there is anyone who exceeds the technology that's currently being used. In fact, there's a webinar, I guess I have to put that down, they're going, I remember I told you they have a proposed program that's going to start this spring, which could have tremendous import if they can, if it works, so, on cleaning up water, and, and they're working on it. We, we really, I'm just so proud of our county and what we've done in, in that field.
Yeah, can you imagine turning the faucet and nothing comes out? Yeah, that'd be bad. All right, bridge builders.
Community bridge builders, we have a program coming up on the 18th, Orange County Human Relations, also known as Ground Swell. It's on hate crimes and hate incidents, what to do, who to report to. So that should be interesting, and there's...
What time and where?
Seven o'clock.
Where?
At Clubhouse 2.
Okay.
Also, the one song that's being done for peace all over the world, not for one group or another group, this is peace for everyone, is going to be March 4th, 5th, and 6th, and that will be the video recording, and then it will be broadcast. So come to our March 18th meeting, and if you want to be part of a 300-person choir, call Rebecca Galad, and there's still room available. Thank you, that's all I have, and that's...
Thank you. I'm so bad at dates. One of you refresh me, there is a date in March that you do know, you don't want to miss, an event is happening. It's the, what...
Would it be an election?
No, 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 this, this is the Fire Authority Open House.
Oh, we wouldn't want to miss that.
And I don't know, but this is where you can go for free and see how the Orange County Fire Authority works. If you have children or grandchildren, bring them along, because it's sort of behind the scenes of what goes on in the firefighting business that is so important to us.
March 16th, from 10:00 to 3:00.
Thank you, I knew you would have it, I just knew you had it. March 15th, from 10:00 to when?
3:00.
3:00 p.m., it's at the, that's in Irvine, right on the border, and it's a great event, it really is. Now, listen.
Or 20th.
Are we ready to close?
Our next meeting, March 20th.
Our next meeting will be March 20th at 2:00 p.m. in this building, and we wish you all a happy tax time, all right? Thank you, the meeting is adjourned.